All right, we're back in session. The session continued on meetings last week. It was December 7th, Coral Harbor Day. So, calendar and correspondence. So, we've got the two on Thursday.
Yeah.
You want to give me the...
Yeah.
I'll take down two.
Okay.
Okay.
Always.
And then a lot. The Timber Counties BMR candidate's at eight.
That's at, uh... Is it, that's...
Right. So, there are two here. That's my understanding. I was wondering if we could check that.
No, it's, uh... This is, yeah, this is kind of candidate days of anybody that has, um, applied for the position.
Okay.
Gets to make their pitch to whoever's on the call, so... I did it in person, but, uh...
Yeah, they can put this together rapidly. So, my understanding is if we could double check, I have that in my calendar. I'm not sure if they moved that around or what. Because I was going to be with Marco's eyes. So, that is each county has one vote or three votes?
I believe the way it works, uh... And I've asked, I've asked Laura Merrill, uh, Timber Natural Resources Policy District Director, to clarify this. I believe the way it works is that it's kind of like the vote for the County Association Board of Directors. Each council member or commissioner has a vote. And then those are tallying. It's not a action by each board commissioner or whatever.
Okay.
So, I think that's the way it goes. I've asked her to clarify this.
We just want, everybody just wanted to hear.
I'm not for sure. Because I heard it was Clay's Harbor County. I've heard Wes Cormier, Steve Rogers from Pacific County yourself. I think I heard something about someone kidnapped, so I'm not sure. No, I haven't actually seen the applications yet. We've got the National Bird. Just kind of an even break. We have the holiday breakfast, 6:45 on Thursday.
Volunteer, volunteer.
Yeah. I'll stay with the food. I don't want to give anybody any time or anything like that. I believe also the, uh, the exit conference, which everybody thought was supposed to happen last week for the annual financial audit, it's going to happen today at 11 o'clock.
At that meeting, they asked for one, they asked for one week's extension.
Contendence or...
Yeah.
For us.
We all have the other, uh, county board commissioners to view, to you regarding a case that wanted to matter half. There's a legitimate legal action of threats overturning a longstanding right of the county board commissioners to entertain a special counsel when needed to perform their business. As a donation letter, there's a course fund that's under the building regarding discounters, providing a college, uh, the Dutchman's ground water data. That's pretty extensive. And then there's correspondence from Rita LaFord, Forest Supervisor of the National Forest, and Jamie Kingsbury, Forest Supervisor, now Lakers of Holley. This is regarding, um, the national forest to repurchasers and interested parties providing the timber sale program, small business administration policy. And the last course funds, it was received, um, from Jefferson County. And you saw that email, I think. This is to the board from Jefferson County Board of Commissioners regarding our adopted interlocal agreement to create a new solid issue for the year of health organization.
Yeah, I think we had, we discussed the interlocal. I think we had touched on this. I have, we haven't seen the correspondence in Jefferson County. I think they were, they were just following up on the, on the power of elected counties for, uh, interlocals to make sure that their thoughts are for each, each board commissioners.
I had a chance to network with Kathleen Lard at the county's, uh, County Commissioners' Association meeting that the sound said, you know, the document as it stands right now. We'll sort of give a look.
Okay. Is it?
Thank you, Cindy.
Cindy. Your recommendation from Health and Human Services to award proposal for mental health assistance to youth services in the public schools to Port Angeles School District. Do you want to go?
Good morning. Well, this is the first of many reports to come through for 2016. This is actually a county RFP that we put out early in the summer and only had one response to, and we, of course, not sufficiently responsive to the RFP. So, we re-released it. We've had three different school districts at the bidders conference, but when we found to submit the proposals, there was only one. And it is the Port Angeles School District. And they are proposing mental health therapy visits for elementary aged children. They have intervention specialists that they hired at the middle school and high school levels. So, it's the elementary that where the gap was. And what they're proposing to do is essentially a $70,000 proposal for 10 months. So, it would be throughout 2016 minus the two months when the school isn't in session. So, 10-month contract, basically working with the private child mental health therapist in the community. So, the school would take care of the screening, getting, getting the kids to the therapist, and this would essentially cover that piece of it. It is pilot program. It's an interesting new role for schools to be doing this. And it also, I think, will basically demonstrate whether we have a sufficient number of child mental health providers in the community to handle this.
So, did the other scrolls decline because of any particular reasons?
They didn't ask why they didn't follow through after they had attended the bidders conference. The West End is, Florida Valley is kind of what they've covered right now. At least on prevention and state funding. So, there's kind of surprise when they weren't there. Squim and Crescent also attended, but they were consistent to listen to their work process.
And then this uses up all the money, so why? They have to return it.
Yeah, well, and another thing to do is that we were looking to say that our, you need to open up. I think there's an issue of really working out the part of it. In 2016, it seems that they're just on the part of the lottery more than they do want to be issued now. In 2016, I just wait for the next round, and I really can't find a response.
And then some, you could say.
Your first recommendation out of the normal school district for the contract and contract coming back.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm applying the faulty recommendation of the task force. Okay.
Thank you.
Amendment two with prevention alerts extending contracts through December 31, 2016. Add it.
Well, there she is.
You're not a... This one or not?
Unique sweater, right? Christmas time.
My Christmas sweater. One of my favorites I have in the year. Um, what we have is another amendment to the prevention works contract. As you remember, when they gave their update last week, they said that this would become a year. So, it extends it for another year and the rest of the money. So, they would... Excuse me. I'm sorry. Here.
Pitch your...
Adding the rest of the money so that it would completely use up the prevention that applies by the end of next year. Which is also at the end of the year.
Are there further comments? 48, 49, prevention works, sort of.
Yes. Yes. We've been working with the Treasury and President. We want to...
Okay, tomorrow. Administrators Analysis Recommendation for Indigent Defense Services.
As you know, our current contract for indigent defense services is, uh, on December 33rd. And, um, the board, the majority of the board, actually was unanimous at the time during one of the budget meetings. The two of you that were here asked me to, to go out to bid for these services the same way we did the last time. The last time we only got the one bid. And it is not required that we bid these kinds of services. So, I did go out to bid, but I held off waiting for, to know whether or not the cities were going to sign that consolidated contract. You know, for criminal defense and misdemeanor, it would increase as a our responsibility the entire cost of indigent defense as opposed to, you know, our portion and then the cities paying their portion. And unfortunately, that took a while longer than I was expecting. And so, last minute, last minute, we went out to bid. I did receive two bids, one from Crown Public Defender and one from Paying Law. I had asked for individual bids for each district court and for Superior Court. And then I said I would allow a bid for both courts. You know, combined bid, essentially the same as last time. I was hoping to be able to show or that if anybody wanted to bid on both, there ought to be together. There ought to be some efficiencies, you know, that if they, just as we found last time in Crown Public Defender, their district court bid plus their Superior Court bid was less money than their combined bid. So, I was expecting to be able to show the same thing. What I got back was a bid for only district court from Paying Law and only combined without breaking up, without breaking out separately for Crown Public Defender. And both of them, both of the bids were, um... I rejected both bids as a, as a bid thing in intermediate negotiation phase with both, with both entities because it was more money than I had in the budget. And just to tell you how I did, I prepared the budget again, last minute, last minute, all these things coming together. Our 2015 cost for indigent defense contract with Crown Public Defender was $865,240. The City of PA had a contract for $115,000, partly with Crown Public Defender and partly with Paying Law. And the City Squim had a, a budget of $55,000 for a total of $1,035,240, combined total for everybody. And then on top of that, um, we have traditionally get, gotten a, a grant from the Office of Public Defense that's been going up based on the number of, total number of cases in Superior and District Court divided by popular, I was a little bit, anyways, about 65,000. So, I had, um, expected if we carried on moving forward, and there was really no COLA, the June to June COLA was zero. So, so it would be no COLA if we were continuing the contract. So, for 2016, I would have expected collectively between all of our bodies, $1,10240 in costs. So, however, I added, um, what did I add? I added, uh... In building the budget while this was all out going out to bid, I, I, I put in, in the budget $1,140, which was $39,760 more than last year. So, I, I basically put a $40,000 escalator into the budget, anticipating that that would give me room for when the bids came in. I was really hoping that the bids would come in low because of competition. And quite frankly, I'd heard from four different people indicating, taking information indicating they were thinking about bidding, but we only got two back. So, I put in $1,140. Well, after renegotiating and the bids came back in, um, Crown Public Defender's combined bid of $1,190 was $50,000 more than the $40,000 raise I had given, okay? Or that I had put in for the combined total. So, I didn't have the money in the budget. I didn't feel like I could, I could go that way. It was $89,760 more than the combined totals of all the cities and the counties. And like I said, it was $50,000 more than what I put in the 2016 budget. So, I was worried about taking that one altogether. The Paying Law bid at $418,000 was less than what I had put in the budget just for, just for district court. I put $430 in the budget for district court and $640 in the budget for Superior Court, adding up, and then the $70,000 grant, adding up to the $1,140. That's what I was anticipating. So, the Paying Law at $418,000 was less than I had budgeted. So, I felt like, okay. My, and I, and I went over the, the weaknesses of each of my analyses and the, and the proposals. I mean, the way I saw it, it was a really tough issue for me because I really felt like I had a good working relationship with Harry for, Eric Gasmick, the director of Crown Public Defender over these many years. And that, um, you know, it makes it easier on me to only have one entity to deal with. However, as I looked at it all, I believe the Paying Law bid was responsive. It, it hit all the key points that are required, both in our policy and in, um, the Office of Public Defense rules for indigent defense. It appeared to do everything we needed to do. It was less than, or within the budget that I had expected, a little bit less, and appeared to, to meet all of our needs. So, my recommendation, but I have nothing from Superior Court, oh no. And in talking with Crown Public Defense, I had asked them during the renegotiation phase, you know, would you please consider giving me a bid for each? He said he would talk to his board. I did get the response back, um, last week. His board said no, he wouldn't. I asked him if he would give me an extension. He said no, he wouldn't give me an extension, you know, to wait longer to try and put this, this whole package together. So, you know, back and forth. My recommendation is that we select the Paying Law group for the district court and ask the Crown Public Defender to re-propose for Superior Court and anybody else, just go out for bid, I guess, Superior Court and Juvenile Court. But I really believe that needs to be done in this short period of time that we have left. We, we really have to have, in my judgment, a unanimous decision among the board. If, if the board is not unanimous, I, and I put that in my recommendation, I believe we should, that this is the right thing to do because we're leaving ourselves exposed on the Superior Court side. I mean, on one person I talked to said, you know, gee, you can't do this because Crown Public, and not that I would ever expect Harry to do this, but Crown Public Defender could just put in their same bid and say, yeah, it's just for Superior Court, nobody else bid, and you're stopped. Then what you do. So, there's some exposure there. I'm a little bit worried about it unless the board wants to move forward. I, I, I don't have the money in the budget. My, it's too late in my judgment to change. I mean, we haven't officially approved the budget, but we need to do it by tomorrow. I don't think it's a good idea to change the budget. We don't know what it's going to be anyway. So, budget's an estimate. If it turns out that the rebid of Superior Court combined with the Juvenile, the district court is more than we have, we'll have to ask for a budget emergency next year. So, for all those reasons, uh, it was a tough call, but, but like I say, I believe both bidders were very responsive. I believe Paying Law, although being brand new, and the weakness there is, is being brand new, you don't know what it's going to be. You don't know how the service is going to be provided. I've had nothing but respect and great service from Crown Public Defender since all the time I've been here. They do a, a really good job. We've never been sued. That's a big thing. Other counties have been. At the same time, I didn't feel, from three years ago, when I asked the prosecutor's office, how do I make, can I put somebody on the decision-making panel to tell me to, to basically decide is one firm, when I was anticipating, uh, multiple bids and we didn't get any, but how can I decide if one firm is better than another from the advent of providing the service, the legal service? And I was essentially told I cannot. If the bar association and, um, the, the state says that the attorney is legal and certified to practice law in our county and they have the six months of work, uh, experience doing public defense, which both parties do, I can't decide. I can't say no, one of them is better qualified than another. So, I kind of look at my operational things. And operationally, I believe in my analysis that the Crown Public Defender contract is probably is at least $50,000 more than I expected it would be. And that was after I gave him a $40,000 raise when there was no COLA. And, um, it's probably $100,000 more, my best estimate, than if we accept the Paying Law and we get what I think is a reasonable, somewhere between $650,000 and $700,000 estimate just for Superior Court. So, that's essentially what, what my thinking was. I understand there's all kinds of political, um, issues going on. There's, there's people that are very concerned one way or another. I've heard from a number of people. I've been told that you each have been contacted by people. So, um, again, my recommendation is as it is, just because it doesn't fit in my budget. But I really do believe it would be in our best interest to see if we could negotiate a, an extension for a month or two with Crown Public Defender and give us a better timeframe to come to a better decision sometime after the first of the year, get more information. So, I'd answer any questions if anything.
So, do we have a clause in our existing contract that would allow us to say we extend the terms of this agreement for 30 days?
No. We do have, it's a standardized contract that just with all of our regular contracts, if both parties agree to extend, we can extend, um, as long as the extension happens before it ends, right? Otherwise, we'd have to start over with a new contract.
And our contracts expire December?
December 31st.
So, how long do you think it'll take to get submission of proposals for Superior Court and Juvenile?
You know, I would like to believe it could be done in a couple of weeks, but the reality is if there's another party that would want to get involved as opposed to just Crown Public Defender putting something forward, because like I said, they bid both contracts the last time. I know they know how to do it. But, and let me tell you, I have, I have no reason to believe that Crown Public Defender has, is going to do anything but a, but a tremendously good job for us to, in the future, if we have it. It just became in way too much money for what I could afford, what I reasonably believed should be afforded. You know, this whole idea of consolidation was supposed to improve efficiencies and save money. And I gave, I gave it $40,000 more than what we were paying collectively, and it didn't, it didn't touch it. And so, that was surprising and disappointing to me. So, I don't know. I don't know. A month would be the typical time that you would give to, to a complex bid like this if you were adhering to bid law. But it doesn't require bid law. We can negotiate. We don't have to go to bid. But the board told me they wanted to go to bid. So, it'd been a lot simpler if I'd just negotiated a contract and avoid all this. I would have negotiated hard and, you know, I'd have done the best I could.
Well, I'd like to thank you opened the door for some competition. And I did network in four exit, um, just four as well as with the prosecuting attorney. And the only real issue that they shared was that with regard to district court, their hope was that they were able to continue. We've got a long period of time where the court has to pause while these issues take itself out.
Right. Not an apple-to-apple issue because we don't know what another, what a bid would be for Superior Court. So, there's a question about the cost. We do know it'll take about $90,000 if we have to take Superior Court in house, which interests a cost of $1.3 million. In years gone by, this Public Defender's Office has had a longstanding tradition of working with the county on our budget issues. And many times you have been able to work with them, deliver their budget number. The board tomorrow votes for budget 1.4, 1.1 million, more than $40,000. I have no doubt that over the next month, you'll be able to work with Harry to reach an agreement that would live within our budget. So, that's number two. So, if you're kind of cutting off that process a little quick. Three, uh, there's a 30-plus year history of a nonprofit organization providing what is a constitutional service to our citizens. There is no history of private attorneys providing constitutional service. I think that's really different. And then they have a board of directors. Dave Newper is the chair of their board of directors. The rest of their board of directors are all very reasonable, respected, highly sought-after, highly qualified. They brought the public office, some of them. They have served this community. And so, they have a board of directors at which the public, I think, has some trust. By the law firms are for-profit. So, they're nonprofit versus a for-profit. So, I also know that as the laws have changed over the years, Public Defender's Office has been at the forefront of working with those law changes. They have cast a county out of any litigation. They have kept the county, have not been besieged by members of the bar stating that we're not providing adequate public defense. We've not been sued by defenders who have said they have not been. So, you open up a whole pan of doors and boxes by making a change and to make a change this rapidly. Competition is good, except you can't, nonprofits are not a competition before profits. So, you begin as apples to apples. And three, uh, I think it is important that we give Jim a month to work with the Public Defender's Office to live within our budget. You could also talk to the other party and say if he can do the whole thing for $1,084,000. There's no track record there. There's no history. This has never been an issue. Public defense, we have never had meetings that have been overrun with people upset about the public defense being issued in this county. So, we have tried to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, and I for one am not interested in, I, I, what is the problem? Seriously, what is the problem? And if it's over $50,000, I have no doubt that he could work with the public, he could go to the board, he could work with them. They are nonprofit and they understand that we're a government, and we're nonprofit and we only have so much money. We're only authorized to serve. There are other ways you can do it, but what is the problem? What, what's, I know of a problem. I really don't, and I've never heard of a problem. I really don't, and I've never heard of a problem. I've never been stopped on the street to say, hey, Public Defender's Office, you can't make not a good job. So, you make a change. That, that, that is a little scrutiny. And then finally, what we don't know, and I thought about this a lot over the weekend, and I'm probably way outside my education, but I do know this in my law enforcement days, that the reports and the citations that are issued in District Court are vastly different than the reports that are taken up in Superior Court. And how do we know that District Court always is gonna be, that just that alone is a simpler process for public defense or Superior Court? Some of these are murder trials, some of these are life, you know, life and death trials. So, to say, we're just gonna carve out, and I can do it cheaper based on an analysis, of which your analysis is just a per case analysis across the spectrum, really insufficient, because you cannot, my limited experience, I have testified in Superior Court many, many times in District Court, my professional experience with Superior Court. All of this, the level of complexity is not apples-to-apples. So, again, it could be that Superior Court would not come in with the six or seven hundred thousand based on, they're just dividing the number of cases across the two courts. In fact, it could even come in. That math can't work because of the complexity of the cases. Some of these cases go on for months and months, and so, the other thing is, all of those, wait, wait how often? I won't go there. Those are my thoughts. I would suggest that we give Jim a month to negotiate with Public Defender's Office to live within our budget, and if we can't negotiate to live within our budget, we'll figure out another, another sense of cost savings. Public defense is a right. As a law enforcement officer, hundreds of times in my career, I gave the right, someone's handcuffed. One thing you say is, you have the right to remain silent, you have the right to an attorney. If you cannot afford an attorney, one will be appointed to you. I hold that right here. I'm not willing to gamble on a new form of doing business. I actually fundamentally strongly believe in that right. I've issued those rights to people. I've had people exercise those rights, and it is confident, the confidence in me in this county, when those rights are exercised, professional competent public defense is given to our citizens when they can't afford it in a permanent. And so, no disrespect to anybody else, but honestly, you have an organization, thirty-plus-year track record, always working with the county, always willing to help the county in tough times. They haven't been sued. What's the problem? What are we trying to solve here? And at the end of the day, the bid is an apples-to-apples, vastly insufficient, if it can just provide the number of cases or lawsuits. My advice would be, work with Harry, open up a contract, live within the budget that will pass tomorrow. Any suggestions?
Can you tell me how it works? Like, sorry for cutting you off, Mike. If the person comes into Superior Court and is assigned their defending attorney, is there a cap on the number of hours that person can access because we wrote a contract for a specific dollar amount?
No. What we currently have is, the contract we currently have with Crown and Public Defender, by the way, it doesn't, my analysis didn't, that's the only, the only small little item I would pick with what you said, I agree with almost everything else, is that the analysis was not done on a flat per case across the basis. It wasn't. The analysis was done on a flat per attorney, all-in cost per attorney across, and one required four point seven, one required four point three six attorneys. And...
Then I might argue that, okay, I'll accept that, but then I would argue that you're still, your attorneys are practiced in Superior Court, they didn't have to be vastly more experienced, so their costs, you're saying...
And I mentioned that.
Yeah, but you're saying your cost per attorney is the same for the courts?
No, I'm mentioning that in the very first one, if you notice, I said the weakness of my analysis that way is that Superior Court attorneys need more experience and should be paid more, it's on the top of the page. And so, I said, you know, what is that? Is that fifty-seven thousand dollars for, you know, a little bit more than twelve thousand per attorney per year? Just a guess, based on, it's an informed guess, based on the salaries that I've seen that, quite frankly, Harry has given me for his various attorneys, the Superior Court attorneys versus the District Court attorneys, is where I came with that number. So, I mean, I did the best I could when I couldn't get the sample. But to go back to your question, when I couldn't get the separated bids from, go back to your question, the way it happens now is that the Supreme Court had issued rules and, oh gosh, I think, was it two thousand eleven or twelve? I can't remember exactly, but a few years ago, basically limiting the number of cases that an ingent public defense attorney or a public defense attorney can themselves carry.
For a year or so.
For a year, yeah. And that's a full-time attorney doing nothing else but ingent defense, and it's a different level. They can do four hundred cases in Superior Court and two hundred and fifty cases, and if it is, was it two fifty or one fifty? I'm confused now. One fifty. It's a hundred and fifty cases in Superior Court. So, that's a Supreme Court decision, full-time, right? And I understand there's all kinds of things going on, and so, we had to issue a policy change, which we did a year ago, or two years ago, basically saying we would adhere to that, and it's really, really interesting, the Office of Public Defense issued rulings that says, and then the legislature approved an RCW that says it's the county, or the cities in the case of municipal law, but the county that has to be, has to make sure that the attorneys don't go over their limits. And it allowed the judges to do it, and they kinda universally backed away and said, no, they don't wanna be involved in that. And so, we had to pass a policy change saying we would make sure. And so, that's one of the really good things that Harry has done for me the last several years, is given me that report, shown me exactly, you know, how many cases his attorneys covered, and so, we stayed very much in compliance. So, the contract we have now anticipates a fixed fee for an amount of cases in each court of various kinds in each area, and then it allows for a plus or minus ten percent. If the number of cases should be reduced by more than ten percent, or the number of cases should be increased by more than ten percent, we can reopen and negotiate a price, is what the current contract is.
So, the way it's organized is that someone that uses a defending attorney for Superior Court...
Yes.
Is assured they're gonna have access to legal counsel?
Yes.
Their case becomes more complicated, sixty to ten percent, the resources are available?
Yeah, we also have in the contract that, first of all, they don't do any extremely complicated, like murder trials and things like that. Those go to the Superior Court to ward themselves, and they have another pot of money, their own money, for conflict counsel, okay, that they handle. And they can also go outside that, like they did in that last retrial murder trial we had, outside of the three attorneys that they have on conflict counsel, and appoint an outside firm out of the county to make sure, and then they just send the bill down to us, make sure we have to pay them. And that's kinda the way it works. But getting back to your point on ingent defense, we do also have, and Harry, to his credit, has never asked for this money, we also have the opportunity, if any particular case gets incredibly expensive, they have to hire, bring in way more investigators, way more witnesses, this kind of stuff, there is also the opportunity to come and negotiate for some extra fees, and Harry's never done that. He's always worked within the budget we had, and that's why I said, I was really looking forward to, or continuing, I have no reason to want to lose Harry's firm, because he's been very, very good, I believe. And I have no doubt they've had some very expensive cases, but on the other hand, probably have some that went along really quick, and you know, so, within the total, we've been able to negotiate.
So, what I think you just heard is, it doesn't make any difference which firm is elected. On one issue only, they're the same, and that issue is providing legal defense to the person that has requested, because they don't have the money.
Right. Same number of attorneys, depending on how many cases we have, is the law, and they all have to do, they all have to have a minimum level of experience, they all have to have a minimum level of continuing education credits, they all have to have a minimum level of salary, because we have to say that they are comparable to what we're paying prosecutors that with the same level of experience. You know, we have to make sure that that's about the same. It's never exactly the same salary and benefits, because we can't reproduce our benefits. Again, Harry's done a great job with that, in showing me every year and putting it in the report that we give to Office of Public Defense every year, showing that we met all of the qualifications and all the guidelines.
So, then, to me, I'm just thinking out loud here, decision criteria then goes to issues such as cost and risk management. If the same level of service is gonna be provided regardless of which firm we select because of the process that we follow...
Yes.
It's not a quality issue, because the same quality exists.
In what I'm allowed to interpret for quality, yes, because I can't evaluate individual attorneys and how good they are.
But the issues that...
But you're right. Risk management and cost are the two issues. And in a lot of ways, as risk management and cost always are, they're opposite one another. You know, typically, you know, you would think you get what you pay for, right? If you pay less, you take on more risk, that you might get sued in this particular category. You get a new firm, a new outfit, never done it before, never filled out the paperwork, never been in charge of this big of an operation, the chances are that something that go wrong that we could be sued on is a little bit higher, there's no question. On the other, so the risk management side, if we accept the bid of a new firm, I believe our risk goes up, the cost goes down, however.
You gotta go back.
Huh?
Can't say that.
I believe that's true on the Justice District Court side.
Which one, Mike, the risk or the...
But we don't, just, how? We're the straight face. There are all these people. Can you say you can guarantee our costs are gonna go down when you don't know the other half of the bid? You're straight, again, Jim. You too. I cannot. How can you say that? How? Can you definitively guarantee to the public? I cannot. No, then don't say, then how do you say that? Because, you know, when I'm budgeting, I don't definitively guarantee the public anything in a budget. I'm making my best estimate. And my best estimate is, the District Court bid we got is lower than what it would have been.
That's not a good bid. That's not what the county service people are asking for. That's like saying, that's like saying we're gonna build a road, and one contractor comes in saying, I'm gonna do the road and the trail next to the road, and another contractor says, I can do the trail. And the trail, when you break it out, is much lower than just the trail portion, saying, I think I'm gonna give it to the contractor that'll just build the road, the trail, we'll worry about the road part later, but guarantee I'm gonna save money.
That's a good analysis.
You cannot guarantee...
I cannot guarantee. I agree with you there.
And if you know, it's about ninety thousand, if we have to give you enough, if there's no reason why to bid it, maybe just one up to two hundred and some odd thousand, almost three hundred thousand.
That's also about analysis. I can't guarantee. I didn't say guarantee. I just said my best estimate.
For one portion, a very large contract...
Yes.
And a very large service.
Yes.
That's my point.
And I can tell you, to speak to your point, because I was asked this question directly by one of the many people who came in Friday to talk to me about why they didn't invite what my recommendation was, this apparently got overed at all over town, is that, yes, indeed, if Crown and Public Defender had come in with the original bid or the revised bid, it's something I could have afforded. I would've recommended that based on the, based on the risk analysis. I would recommend that bid, but when it's ninety thousand more dollars than the combined total of the cities and us, and I gave forty, fifty thousand more than I had in the budget, that was the difference for me.
So, you don't know?
But I do not know. You're right.
So, you're holding the...
It's just an estimate.
Right. How do you still...
Risk is high.
There is no decision to be made until you know, and if you don't get a bid for just Superior Court, then you have to put together a package for in-house.
Yes.
And so...
My best estimate is that would be ninety thousand.
And very weak, deal contract for just District Court, you'd be awarded right now, until we get up to know all the apples-to-apples and all the costs. You just cannot.
I cannot.
You cannot do that.
You're absolutely right. That is true.
So, you're thinking, Mike, that Jim gets to the negotiating table hopefully by the end of the year. And to tell you the truth, I'm a little letting back, if it takes him some more time, because the budget, you don't know exactly how many cases we're gonna handle.
No.
It's an estimate, okay? So, the odds are that it could get changed for a very legitimate reason.
Abort that.
In January? I mean, so it takes a little time, so the players will work with us. If I'm hearing you correctly, your position is, we shouldn't take any, accept any offers till we know what the parties can do on Superior Court. I'm concerned that Juvenile would struggle.
Yeah, Juvenile's part of Superior Court, it would have to be.
Is that your position, Mike?
And that's a reasonable position. I'm not disagreeing with that position.
I think it is a reasonable position.
I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not disagreeing, and that's kinda what I, that's what I'm saying here. If we didn't have a unanimous selection, one way or another, that would be my recommendation, we'd make a couple of months.
These contracts, a three-year contract, a three-year contract, who would be willing to leave their board of directors with over fifty thousand dollars, a three-year contract has thirty-plus certification, no doubt, the nonprofit contract, whether it's there or not, I have no question, no doubt, and you wouldn't have to lose that chance to lay out a budget, lay out a surrender of a three-year contract, so that the next year there's no budget emergency of public defense, that's fine, we'll be straight there. My point is that I'm not, I'm in the non-profit, the band is track record, it's a community gift, and a track record of working with the county, but it's actually a big deal.
And to be fair, I've now, this will be what, my fourth new contract since I came on, because we used to just do two-year contracts. And every time that I didn't go to bid, I was able to negotiate exactly as you are saying, with their director, and we put together a package that we both felt was fair and legal and lived within the county budget, every time. And had I been...
And had I been...
Yeah, had I been able to do that this time without going to bid, I'm confident I would have done it. But in this case, the going to bid turned out to be way higher than I expected.
If you have a bid for Superior Court, you may have come here, you may make that statement. I'm still telling you, you cannot, if any statement of it, I have a bid for all the services that anyone applies...
I do, and that's what I was talking about.
...for one portion, you cannot, you cannot prepare...
That's what I'm saying. The bid I got, for all of them, was way higher than I expected.
Fifty thousand dollars on a million-dollar contract?
It was, it's actually ninety thousand more than I expected. I really thought he'd come in under and he'd be a hero, but I'm just saying, I did extra forty just in case.
I think if we had gone to a more... But again, as a response, we rejected all of them, because they're not, they don't provide all the services that we want.
They do, and that was why I rejected the first place, both of them.
So, I'd be, I'd be in favor of seeing what, you know, what Harry can do with the Superior and Juvenile Court, yeah, in hopefully a short period of time. And kinda the issue, I guess, the, and Jim, is the District, the awarding of the District Court contract, and I favor the idea of bringing some fresh blood into the process. Regardless of how effective Harry has been, competition is good, and I think there are enough sideboards that the system's gonna give us feedback if there's poor performance, I mean, our worst case, if someone comes to us with a lawsuit that wasn't represented properly. I don't see that exposure in District Court, the level of the cases that they handle, but I could be wrong, as opposed to a murder case in Superior Court. So, to that end, in the interest of competition, I'd recommend a conversation with Harry that is just on the Superior Court and the Juvenile Court, to prevent the situation where the position that can be taken is to knock it off competition on District Court. I don't think that's fair. I don't think that's a big practice. I think the door's been opened, the parties responded, the only issue that's on the table is the Superior Court. And, you know, I'm kinda with you, Mike, in terms of looking at the risk associated with fresh blood or a fresh firm on Superior Court. I think it is something that we need to be cautious of. So, that's my recommendation.
I see those as two different recommendations. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe his recommendation is essentially that we say, you know, it's something, we only want a bid for all of them, and let's go back and negotiate. You could read between the lines, because he offered, is that if paying law would also come forward with a bid for Superior Court side, and then, and then, you know, let's see if anybody comes forward, but until, what I heard him say, until and unless we have both sides taken care of, which in your preference is done, I heard, is done by a nonprofit who we know has done a good job in over the years, and you'd like me to, or you'd like the board to say, you know something, let's reject all the bids, let's start over and direct the administrator to just negotiate a new contract with Crown and Public Defenders that fits within our budget, is what I think I heard from you. And what I'm hearing from you is, let's hold the new blood in District Court and ask Harry to negotiate just the Superior Court side, and those are two different things.
I agree with that. I think we have a different position. I've heard from the... Okay. Few observations. Jim, if you could break down the... Jim, if you could break down the, the sort of solid third option here is to bring the, bring the case assignment process in-house, as some other counties do.
Yes.
Mike mentioned the nine hundred thousand dollar cost for that. Could you provide a breakdown for that?
Sure.
For that cost for us? Just wanna be able to see that.
A more complete one, or how it comes up? I mean, I can tell you right now.
Totally.
I can do that. I can do it. It's essentially, just so you know, it's one attorney and one legal secretary, plus associated overhead costs for all Superior Court, and Superior Court requires four point, four and a half, basically, four point six, four point six attorneys. So, one hundred thousand dollars salary and benefits for the attorney, similar to what we do with our, and then fifty thousand dollars salary and benefits for legal secretary, plus some associated costs and expenses, and being over nine hundred thousand dollars.
Well, this is probably not your main, but I'm informed by, you know, my sister-in-law's an attorney in Alabama. The way it works, the way indigent defense works in Alabama is on pro bono basis. Excuse me, the judge, or the county, I'm not sure exactly which, just decides whoever is, you know, whoever's admitted to the bar is obliged by the, the way things work there to represent cases as they come up that don't have, that can't afford their own legal representation. So whoever's on the, who's next in line and sort of gets the case, and that's the way it works there. It's a, it's a kind of a self-organized system. Two other points. One, informed by my time as a port commissioner, the, the port has had a longstanding relationship for legal services with a private law firm in town. Way back when, you know, there was no, there was no reason to kind of question that relationship. But had I stayed on the port, I would have suggested, if I could have gotten at least one more vote from my fellow commissioner, I would have suggested that we put that contract for legal services out to bid, because nobody ought to, ought to believe that they have a contract, a contractual rate relationship perpetuated with the government. Every once in a while, and this was like four decades, every once in a while, there needs to be an opening for other attorneys, other law firms, what have you, to have the opportunity, at least, to come in and make an offer. And so, that was at least part of the discussion, as I recall, a couple of years ago when the Supreme Court rule first came into effect, and we had the case standards for Superior Court, basically, that kind of thing. There was, there was some discussion, I remember at that time, about opening up this process for the opportunity for other law firms, simply because other law firms don't have the same scale as Clown Public Defenders. So they were unable to compete. They were, they were essentially barred from competing. And so, a couple of years passes by, and we have our discussion during the budget. That was the, the reason, in my mind, why we, why we had that discussion, to say, let's, let's open up a bid. Coincident with the consolidation between county and the two cities, see if we can, you know, get some scale economies and maybe save some money here, is what I was, that was the thinking that I remember. The only qualitative difference, the essential difference between a for-profit law firm and a nonprofit law firm, is one pays taxes and the other does, has nothing to say about the quality of representation, but the amount of legal and human, the level of legal and human, the diligence, the zeal, et cetera, and so forth, that, that is an issue. And yes, the, there's nothing to, to cause us to question the quality of service that Clown Public Defenders provides, that, you know, that they do a good job. But, again, and we're, we're in the midst, probably, of looking at this same issue with our labor attorneys, have a longstanding relationship with Clown County. Nobody ought to believe that they have a permanent contract or a permanent relationship with government. That should be open to competition in some kind of way from time to time. The other thing which we haven't talked about is that the courts have a say in this. So I'm interested in hearing you refer to a dispute, I don't know if I should characterize it exactly like that, but an impaired relationship, probably a better way to say it, between District Court of one and Clown Public Defenders. Should we award a successor contract to Clown Public Defenders, what's that gonna do to the cost for indigent offense for District Court? Should that judge say, you're not gonna practice in my court? And, you know, that's, that's Article Three. We have nothing to say about what a judge says about who gets to practice in front of, in front of the bar of justice there.
Well, for me, that was a weakness that I noted, because I have been made aware of it, but it was not one that I felt was my fight, or that I should really spend a lot of time dealing with.
I know, but if it, if it leads to some sort of cost driver, should we award the contract in particular, where that has to be acknowledged somehow? I don't know how to do that, but the, the essential point is that judges, our Superior Court judges and our District Court judges have a say in this. And so, consulting with them is, is legit, and to see how things will work, if it goes this way, or if it goes that way, depending on the decisions and other things. And, and the last thing, so I, I'm coming close to finishing my point here. My point is, let's give this a week. Let's see, you bring back some detailed cost information for bringing it, bringing it in-house, what costs are covered, what costs are perhaps avoided. And I've, I've had some extensive discussions with our prosecuting attorney's office on the question of whether I can or cannot, according to our ethics ordinance, vote on this matter. And the conclusion that Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Brian Wint and I reached was that I could, as long as I fully disclose the relationship of longstanding that Will Payne would have. I have no control whatsoever over who bid, so it just so happens that one of them is a friend of mine, when we, when we bring this back, if we decide to bring it back, I'll, I'll be happy to lay out all the, and fully disclose all the particulars in my relationship with Will Payne, should that, should that be necessary. But I, I think we oughta, I think we oughta give ourselves a week to sleep on this, and bring it back a week from today, and let's see where we, see where we are at that point. Because the, the necessity of the public policy necessity of ensuring that every attorney that's admitted to a bar has the opportunity to bid on providing legal services to indigent defense, is a, is a good, that's good public policy. It's unfortunate that we, that we have these sort of apples that already bids, which leads to the conundrum that we're discussing here, but let's, let's, let's see what happens. Can I really stick, Jim? In terms of being able to get together with Harry, any side of a week?
Well, I can certainly try and hear that in his discussion. His discussion was just bring back to a week what it, the detail, what it really would cost us to do in-house, to bring in-house. And I can tell you that when we looked at going in-house, you didn't talk about this, but when we looked at going in-house a couple, three years ago, both District Court and Superior Court, we were talking then about in-house, in-house was way too much money.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But an ombudsman situation where you have an in-house county employee...
Case coordinator.
Yeah, that coordinated with individuals to provide indigent public defense, as a couple of other counties have done, and it's not more expensive.
Yeah.
But we didn't have support from all of the judges to do that. They liked what we had doing, particularly in Superior Court. Those three judges are gone now.
No, I wanna revisit that.
But that is a, that will take a long time to set up. I mean, I can't just do that in a couple of weeks or a month. But it is possible.
I see that as a potential third option.
Yeah.
It's simply, it's simply somebody that says to attorney X, got a, got a case, can you, can you accommodate it? Yes, no, or you're conflicted, yes, no. Answers yes, okay, you got it. Answers no, you go to the next on the list, and so on, same, same.
There have been a few counties that are already doing that, successful.
And then everybody, every attorney that's submitted to the bar, and perhaps even Jefferson County is why, since attorneys practicing in both counties, at least to my knowledge, that it could give them a shot.
And, you know, to me, that would be a good argument if the board wanted to say, we'd like to look at that, to, to try and talk about getting a one-year extension of our current contract. Because it would take most of a year to put a situation, to put a, provoke a system like that together.
Well, if you wouldn't mind talking to the, to the judges, because we've got a bunch of new ones.
Yeah.
They may have a different need. And just write some, put together a sort of a, as well as you can do it in a week's time, notional third option here, just so that we, we, the board have, have got the full menu of things that we consider.
I can do that. I don't see the end. I feel, it sounds like your bureau is willing to move forward with Mr. Payne's bid. I'd have to put this on the table, because he'll be looking to hire people. Any contract I could work in at this late date, two weeks before Christmas, and certainly you could visit it in the new year, that would be my intention, revisit that contract. Again, I go back to, this is not the time. Two weeks before Christmas, a week before Christmas, we're scheduling on the 23rd, was better than the 23rd. That's not fair to this community, made a thirty-plus-year change, when it could have been discussed many, many times over the last three years. And if, if that's the business that's done at the end of the year, I think it would be imperative on the new board to revisit that as quick as possible, so I just caution you. It's setting up this thing for failure right out of the gate. It's not the right way to get a bid, because it's not what the public expects from this board, two weeks before Christmas. They expect us to just pass the budget, pass the contracts, have to be passed, go on break, and let a new board come in, let the new elected commissioner come in and begin to tackle somebody's way dear issues. This is not good business. Really shouldn't even have been an issue, should it have been direct, we should just direct him, negotiate an extension, and move on. I understand that, for a couple of weeks, you guys can do this, but I'm telling you, it's not, it's, the optics are not good, and it would damage what the goals that maybe you're trying to set out. That's all I'll say, but it would, it's, it's, this is, this wouldn't be a damn deal. Would he be...
Yeah, I just think we could negotiate a, like a three-day or sixty-day extension to the current agreement. What do you think the odds are on that?
I, I think the odds should be good. What I would prefer, given what I've heard now, the totality from the three of you, and what Commissioner Chapman just said, and he's right on, I mean, we don't know what Commissioner Lex Ozias would think, but potentially it could be different than what we're hearing from the three of you. And him being brand-new, you know, he would need to be brought up to speed, so I'm not sure if it would be really even fair to him to try and make this kind of a decision in just thirty days. So what I would prefer, given the totality of everything that I've heard, would be the board to direct me to reject all bids and negotiate a one-year extension with Clown Public Defender, which would entail more money to them, because they're gonna be doing more work under our auspices, but to negotiate that within, within my budget, and then tackle this as a year-long project, or a six-month-long project, with the idea that we would have in place whatever we wanted to do by September, so that we could build a budget on it, and that we could, we could, you know, much more, much more thoroughly and with good deliberation make a, a better decision, whether that's an ombudsman, whether that's a longer-term contract with the current company, whether that's, whatever it might be. To me, that would be fairer to the new commissioner. It would be more likely to achieve a good result for the, for, in my judgment, for the overall citizens, and would be trying to hurry anything along.
Well, let's, let's bring it back next week and have this discussion stand, I think that would be, you know, this is our first touch on this, and so I think it bears a little bit of additional deliberation, consideration, we'll...
Okay.
Just to clear, Jim, so next week, the conversation, second one?
Well, I'd like to see the administrator's opinion here. I'll, I'll attempt to do that. I'll bring back next week all the different options of who I can talk to and what anybody's opinions are.
And then next week, we're gonna have a preliminary discussion on, what does it mean if we try to do something like this internally?
Yeah, yeah, I'll have that, I'll have that data, because I can whip that out.
Yeah, I will look at the full...
I can whip that out in about an hour. So I did it before three years, just updating the new, the new, the thing is, I have to, if we do it in-house, then there's no more question about being close to what prosecutor's salaries and benefits are. It has to be exactly what prosecutor's salaries and benefits are, so that's a pretty easy one to put, put forth.
Okay. So, we'll preface this next week.
Okay.
On the, 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 it is, fourteen, fourteenth. Park Spreading Facilities Change Order Number One with Interwest Construction for Clown County, we ask you to review the project cost. What?
Come on.
Not often we say a cost reduction.
No, we're always tied down. This is a result of several discoveries that have occurred, and we've lost our project out. We've had some additions and some deviations, and fortunately, the net result ends in credit to us, three thousand, two thousand. So we would ask that you approve that.
I wouldn't. As they say, a no-brainer.
Well, yeah. Much of this had to be...
Yeah, the three most periodic words in ship repair contracts, as we've said before, open and inspect. And it's, this is kind of the terrestrial equivalent of that, scrape the asphalt off, you didn't know which one it was.
There, there were lots of interesting things to discover.
Yeah. Okay, so it's gonna be two beams for tomorrow's questions.
Okay. The second item, I guess last week, the car charging station we discussed.
Let me, let me just re-titled this, send in the director, your Joe, bear with me for a second. Clown County Courthouse LID record for project update, per request of Board of Party regarding charging stations.
Okay. The charging stations aren't part of this project that's currently going, they weren't part of the original grant request sent to the Department of Ecology. That said, we have discussed it, it came up last year, I forget exactly the name, but I did some research, I have it at the city, and then it was decided that we would go ahead and put in the underground utility conduits to make that happen. All that stuff's been done, completed. All we need to do then is just figure out what kind of charging station we'll wanna do, what, what kind we're gonna install and get that in. And some of my research, recently, I found out that that's really not quite as easy as it sounds. There are lots of different types of systems that you can start with. There are also lots of incentives, apparently, the state of Washington provides for that, so I need to do some research on that as well. And also, it'll be a decision we need to make as to whether or not we charge for the use of these stations, or we allow people just to hook up. So there's a lot of details that need to be figured out before we end up on a selection. So there's a lot of details that need to be figured out before we enter on this section. All that said, we did in 2016 budget, asked for a carryover of $100,000 for some items. And this being one of them to occur next year. So if there is funding already in place, well, if you approved the budget as it is submitted tomorrow, there will be money in there to do that next year.
Yeah. So while they're doing the buildings, does it make any difference in terms of the infrastructure necessary? Do you need to make any changes to their contracts to provide infrastructure?
No, no, it'll be something totally different. Actually, we have an informal process because I don't think the costs are going to be nearly the same. The costs shouldn't rise to the formal bid process. We should be able to take care of a lot of that, almost all of it.
Yeah, the, I'm not, I think you were here last week to hear the more discussion of the... Stepping back a little bit, you know, there's a, some thought about a network of charging stations, obviously because of the range of the electric vehicle. And there's different times to charge, you know, trickle versus a blast voltage. And so, uh, to me, the question is, what's the most appropriate place for tourism purposes? You know, we want to encourage folks that, that may have an electric vehicle to come drive their vehicle out here. So where's the, where's the strategy as to where these things ought to be appropriately placed? Is courthouse one of the places on, on that route or is it not? So therefore, would it be appropriate to look at an electric station or two or three in the courthouse just simply for court or for county employees? Or do we want to have that as a sort of a waystation, stagecoach stop, as it were, back in the olden days, you know, on this tourist loop? And so, and then, you know, let's all buy the same equipment so we can perhaps have a one maintenance contract instead of, you know, a dozen different kinds of technology and so on and so forth. So there's some, there's some discussion, there's some talk that needs to happen on a, you know, strategic plan kind of a basis for how we, county government and the courthouse fit into the, or don't into the, into the network.
We picked up that conversation, I'm cutting you off now, sorry, last Thursday at the RCND meeting. And in fact, Mike Doherty joined us, and the conversation was, if we look at something that's peninsula-wide, you know, what is the resource we need to coordinate? You've got this gear over here and this gear over here, et cetera. Maintenance is a good example of why you might want to say that you use the same equipment. But Kate Dean was asked by her board whether she could take the assignment. And it's only for a few weeks or maybe a little bit longer, but it's basically coordinating exercise. As an example, Clom Transit is giving thought to a charging station right downtown. We're doing thought to one. There may be possibilities that would present. But there's already a model in place that the city has. And in fact, that one has the benefit, addresses the question of how charging. So they've gone through a process through the lodging tax advisory committee here in Port Angeles to set up a, a system, a protocol where basically lodging taxes are used. And, you know, I'm hearing numbers that they're giving like $3,000 a year, it's not a large amount of money.
That's what I was going to say, and I just verified over the weekend, the city doesn't charge, you're charging stations downtown. So I was going to ask Joel to figure out how, how they're getting around the gift of public funds. And it sounds like the tourism folks have stepped up and said, "This is a benefit to tourism." As long as they use it to market a service, then that's no different than putting money in parks and then marketing, "We got great parks," or "Boat launch," or, you know, we put services out there all the time, but we don't necessarily charge them. So...
And I've gathered information from the city, what do you think?
And I'm questioning, I'm sure you could go back to the lodging tax advisory committee, I'm sure they would support county equipment. Because there's, just because there's two downtown, I mean, there's going to be two up here. People can walk downtown from here, and they can walk into store buildings, and they can do a lot of things. And, you know, park care, I think, I'm traveling, we're going to leave. And hopefully, yeah, maybe a couple of county employees will, will abandon themselves to that option too. Do you know how much they are?
They vary. I mean, I was actually surprised, I looked it up last week, and they're, they can be as much as a couple thousand dollars all the way to six or eight.
Okay, so the $100,000 you're in the budget is not just for that?
No, no, there are other issues and things with that.
So really, you're saying at the outside, we're talking $20,000? I mean, at the really outside, if we really do...
I think, I think right now it's high, the biggest, I think the biggest impact's going to be the wiring and given the distance that we have to run it to get to the station.
Sure, sure.
That's where I was going. The infrastructure, I mean, the conduits there.
So they need to wire it.
No, it's just the conduits.
Is it already closed down?
Yeah. We've got an end, we had to run it to the Transformers on Fourth Street. So there'd be a meter place there, hooked in, wired, we'll go. I'll show you roughly where the stations are going to go. These aren't, these aren't very big. Sorry about this. They're going to go, this is the main entry to the courthouse here. They're going to go right there where that light dot is. There's a, there's a light pole, and it's right at the accessible, it's at the end of the accessible parking places. There are two, you can put two spots there. Yeah. In fact, they, they make these units, they make them, they make a lot of different kinds of outlets. You can't have them just with one outlet, two, three, four. It's, it's pretty neat stuff. And they have apps that people can, if we did choose to charge, they can, they can do all that through their telephones. And it approves and they pay for it, and they go on. Yeah, there was a lot of eye-opening stuff, but the technology's really advanced in the past few years, so... And we've got people around it, electricians and things, that are now familiar with the stations, so...
Sounds like we need to come back right after the first of the year when you're ready to do it. Give us all the options and, but with the idea in mind that we'll definitely plan on being in the game. Because it makes, for that small amount of money, it makes all the sense in the world. And with the lodging tax ability to add to their marketing that, hey, we've got, we've got stations.
Yeah, but there's also a national website that has all the stations located throughout the country. So if you're making, if you're taking a trip somewhere, you can go in and see what's close to where you're going to be. And I think there's, they show one or maybe two in Port Angeles right now. I think there are a couple in Squam, and then one or two to the east of Port Angeles.
For those who criticize subsidizing employee travel, we only do the bus pass program. We encourage employees to ride the bus.
We do.
Provide, you know, access to a bus pass for... Through a program with transit subsidies, so there's that. Someone's using it five days a week, maybe there's a, you know, maybe there's... First of all, I don't know how many of our employees can afford it, but if it's part of it now, because they become more affordable, it would be an issue. But we are a subsidized employee transportation, we encourage lower emissions.
So if, if it's okay with the board, how do you feel about coordinating with Kate Dean?
That is a perfect topic.
Because I think what's going on is Mike Doherty's aware of an organization that has funds. He needs 501(c)(3).
Yeah.
RCND is 501(c)(3) and needs funding. I don't, I'm indifferent about who does the coordination, but coordination at the outset, before we started spending dollars on this stuff is very essential, I think.
Let me get some more information.
Yeah, RCND is a perfect question. I want to get you in contact with them.
Great.
I guess you could work with a lot of the tax advisor committee to see if there's something... And they're out there, there's money there, just look at their help.
So we're scheduled to come together in February just to look at our form and application process in March for another distribution of funds, March?
And then is there any grant that you could buy back for what you just called?
Like I said, there, there are actually a lot of incentives just in the state of Washington. I mean, it's two pages worth.
If Chris Doherty has anything you wish to add?
So Mike, when we, we had a chance to talk about this topic at the RCND meeting, and basically the board asked Kate to investigate taking this on as an RCND project. Was there anything else that you, you wanted to share with us about the project you are working on and the benefit of coordinating?
Well, I don't, it is, I don't know if you all knows that we, there is a $135,000 grant. So the RCND could take a little bit for administering the grant. And then there's hopefully going to be some kind of a survey through local governments to drive towards facilities to see what their plans are and how so. Airmark is going to put something in, like Crescent, Claylock, Quinell. It'll show a build toward this network. And then McCaw has six operating, Jamestown plans to put in their own. The grant might do the first step from Put the Canal. The Port of Fort Townsend has offered a site, and maybe one more in the Port Angeles area somewhere. But part of the, you know, this little group of local 2020 people in Fort Townsend myself, we want to do this survey to see if we could bulk purchase, and as you said, standardize the equipment somewhat. So maybe that M&amp;O would be cheaper if it's clearly standardized. So I think not rushing into it is a good plan. And maybe the OPTC, the Columbia Peninsula Tourism Commission, can help do the survey. I'm going to ask them to do it. And then Power Trip will probably give some ideas because I think they arranged five of them in businesses in downtown Port Townsend. So people are already working on it. Tesla Club worked with Port Angeles, the fund, the one on the waterfront. So somebody has to kind of research what's going on and then what's going to go on next and see if there's a way to bring the price down further, Mike.
Okay. Yeah. Obviously, the website I looked at wasn't up to date if McCaw has five and you're at that many Fort Townsend.
Will you bring some more information back to us for the new year or a recommendation on how we can move forward? For coordinating?
Request for qualification for architecture engineering consultant services for Parks, Fair and Facilities Department.
This is our annual appropriate request for professional services funded in 2016, a year to help with our capital projects. We have quite a few currently on the list, I have two state of architecture engineering, and also there are a few fire metal specialty projects as well.
We can, I know this guy here, questions, comments? Can you be, can I ask you? About the fourth, resolution to establish the government equipment and rental schedule for 2016. Want to come with your board and Ross? Get away.
Okay, well, we're looking at this year, 39 adjustments, department-wise. Some up a little bit, some down a little bit, primarily by, you know, increasing the use of usage. And if you add a new vehicle to a fleet, say, for example, Assessor, they have a new vehicle that replaces a vehicle that's been depreciated out for a couple of years. That reduction in depreciation will obviously drop the rate for a couple of years. And then if you're not able to track, or at least any kind of your debt issued, it's a problem. Bottom line, current expense, both for 2016, maximum for 3.16% increase.
Yes, so what, so what is this next thing?
Um, the road department, basically non-credit expense funds, the road department actually stayed flat. And amazingly enough, through all their presence, some while up a little bit, some while down, it's been obviously flat. And the Clom Bay sewer, have almost a 34% increase, but it's one vehicle. And it's getting near the end of its useful life, and we're going to make some slight expense, uh, or repairs to it. And the plant sewer on replacement, quite an increase in usage on that one too. So we're just picking that up, that one, make sure it replaces here in a couple of years. Uh, this is a, um, it's an annual thing, pretty consistent, pretty standard. Do you have any questions?
And Mike, to better answer your question, when we had the public works, uh, budget, we were with the board members. We ran out of time before we got to Tom to do a full expiration. So I asked, normally, we'd just be bringing back the resolution. All this information was made available with that budget time, but we didn't have time to go over it in detail and ask Tom any questions. So I had asked Ross to make sure that Tom came forward to this. So this is new information, it is the same as we put into the budget, but we're just giving more time for you to answer, ask any questions.
So all the commissioners, do you all realize, or do you all, or you all understand how, basically, how I arrived at these, how these rate adjustments? Um, I have information on every single piece of the equipment, every unit, every revenue. And they're, they're broken into categories where groups of similar equipment are placed. And every year, RCWs require us to review an adjustment, appropriate adjustments to the rates to keep them at close to zero profit as possible. And what I do is I do an evaluation of each category. Very simply, it's expense against the revenue. And if anything's extremely out of line, I'll go ahead and scan through, see if it's an individual piece of equipment that causes a bit of heartache, and if it is, sometimes I'll just let that category go for a year, and oftentimes it covers itself rather than make, make, you know, knee-jerking to a one-time expense or something like that. Anyway, I do that to each of the categories that you see on your rate sheets and, uh, along the up and down.
That's what I'm trying to track. You can show your map. A lot of confidence in the board. Trust the looking. That's our nature here. All right, so that's 3B for tomorrow, this is your questions or comments.
Just a real quick comment, you mentioned Clom Bay Sewer.
I think this is actually...
Oh, I'm sorry, 7A, we have the wrong number here, 7A.
The Clom Bay Sewer, what I wanted to share with the commissioners is that the budget provides for an increase in the rates for the Clom Bay Sewer. And I had, I met with the advisory committee. They still want to go through a formal process where they reach out to the public. And, and so what I'm saying is that what's in the budget right now is a projection. There was general agreement, there is some conversation about whether there should be a difference between the residential and the businesses. And that, to me, is a conversation that occurs locally, especially if it can stay focused on the dollar amount. So just a heads up to you that technically, although that number sits in the budget, I still need to hand-watch the process. We're just a...
It's been the tradition that we have worked closely with the community, the community groups, and have really, you know, the ability to come back and say, "The community's not supported, we can't do this." But I can't imagine that that being, without your support and the community's support. And that's exactly the role we need to play in coordinating with that community. It always comes down to how much can they afford versus how much do we have the time to keep the system running? But at the end of the day, it's public health, so we have to make sure it stays running. And we've been really careful with the increases. Obviously, the public would love to have it be self-sufficient, that's just not feasible. We, a couple of years ago, and probably five, six years ago, had to backfill to the fund of our general funding services. And if we have to do that again, you know, that's option two. And then for a while.
That's right, we did it for three years in a row. We, we did, said that. One-third of the, of the projected shortfalls each year.
We've looked at, we still have, you know, I've offered that, I've covered the records, I've asked for that documentation. Do you have that history? And you know, the community, economic department, maybe, they just can't afford to run that service or whatever. And there's just not a program. I could lost, we've lost regulators probably in that, maybe. Please work on how to bring it back and bring back what you think they can afford and what any event is showing up.
Oh, that is a way. Great work enveloped it. If you need more specifics, as you, as you play your role in that, let me know. I'll give you the rate comparison sheet, which is basically the refined sheet. That shows you all the expenses by common tire parts, shop labor, inside labor, outside labor, fuel, with the can accidents, anything like that, appreciation. And then the revenue line, I will provide you that sheet.
I give the question, the show, the actual, and then finally, you need to have, they can lead on securing the necessary funding at the beginning of the year.
There's more than time when it boils down to that. That'd be a great project. And I personally believe, well, we see you with sewer is still an undiscovered found jewel in America. You show me another place in America that has that much unencumbered coastline and has built little lots that hook into public sewer. I just, I just can't, and why haven't it discovered is beyond the need to a degree. But that is, that is a, and so, I mean, to me, it's economic development as well of sewer. As long as, that's also with not having all the deferred financial purposes. So all that sewage that has to go in, bleach into the stream, it allows all those lots to be buildable in there.
Oh, yes.
Looking forward to when Kate starts taking the lead on the third place of the process.
I very much appreciate the collaboration because the committee was concerned the budget would be published. Citizens would read, there's a rate change, and there had been no conversation with the community. And so I committed to, we would present this as an alternative, discuss it with the public and share with the commissioners what those conversations generated.
And this is just one more example. And I feel like, given the events that have been happening the last couple of months, it doesn't prove to be really this. Town budgets, just like government budgets, just like your own personal budget, are estimates. And they're living documents. We have to follow a little more rules and be a little more open. And the commissioners have to do it in an open session anytime we make a change. But they are just estimates. They're our best estimate, given the information we have at the time we move forward. And new information comes in all the time.
Well, one last thing for the board. You may have intended some of those meetings earlier, but before, you may consider everybody inquiries with traditionally, how the board commissioner is finding out there. Usually, given the Clombay C.U. Center when you're with the cafeteria at the school, of which rates were given to public comment from the previous year, I want to schedule that. That was worked well. And when the staff came out and laid out, when you put it on board, the people become more reasonable and understand. But yeah, get those documents where we, when we've done budgetary over the years, now give us a break in history, the tradition of working with that community.
Great. Appreciate your advice.
So the name for tomorrow?
Release the ballot. This was the meeting in January. Remember, when you have any Clombays, you get snowed in that stuff.
This particular document, a little bit, I'm pressing my head a little bit.
I can tell you, you already have this in front of you. You've already reviewed it. This is just the, the requirement of, to come back to you for the actual release that you asked for. When Joe was ready, I mean, you guys approved it already. This is the document determined to be necessary. It has to be voted on, approved by the entire commissioners, because it is a, one of the bundle of rights of, of land. And therefore, it has to be formally done by the board. So that's all this is. It's just following through with the proper paperwork on the agreement that you, or the question you already answered a couple of seasons.
So functional.
It is.
E sixes and all the way.
Yes.
That'll be 7B for tomorrow. We'll see any other discussion. Good to the order.
I was thinking about the request. Thanks very much, Ron.
Thank you.
It came to us from the, from the charter review board. And, you know, I understand we'll probably take a look at the issues beginning in January. But if we look at all the issues and try to pick out which one is toughest, it was the last issue on that is the title of it. And I've been thinking about a simpler way to tackle this. And I just wanted to bounce it off the board. Right now, we have a provision that's in our charter that says that elected officials are exempt from personnel policy. And my proposal is that we, we visit, why did that get there? Is it necessary today? I'm just going to go there and consider the status. And if that exclusion was reversed, would that actually satisfy what the charter review is looking for in terms of a different mechanism that could deal with reporting issues, personnel issues, as opposed to setting up a bunch of, well, systems, more bureaucracy? It's nothing that I'm firmly committed to. I just thought about that as an item to run next year. The rest of them, I saw it as kind of mechanical, that one. I saw it as could get pretty involved. And then I stood back from it and asked a question. If I was asked as an elected, would I agree to follow the personnel policies that all employees follow? Why you wouldn't, I say. That's fine. You know, the only issue I see is that I do a lot of travel, you know, since I'm not here at the office all of the time. Let my calendars go, take a member of the public, you don't know where I am. So besides that, I just, I can't think of a good reason. I just wondered too, if they had a sense of history on that, whether this has been in sport before.
I would assume we were required to follow the policies, although some are exempt by state laws. It's just, you know, technically, we only have to meet once every forty-five days or once a quarter, I think, to fulfill your duties. And traditionally, they're not, you know, the employees obviously have time, so sick leave, vacation, other benefits of elected officials don't have, so for travel. The purpose is, at the end of the day, an official is elected twenty-four seven, so you're really never allowed off the job. You're never allowed from vacation. You're sort of a whole other position. But I think, I thought that just agenda, I mean, I think that you could put something together that says, you know, unless you're certified, say, law, all the officials don't follow time. But you don't have the policies that you're supposed to. I assume the most of the public trying to look at that situation.
Yeah. Go to the quality areas and see if you have any questions.
You know, in my estimation, in my estimation, to answer your question, that's exactly the point of contention that got us into the, into the difficulty with the issues, the investigation going on with the previous DCD director, is that, is that we were reminded that the elected officials are specifically exempt, Article 10, Section 10.2 of the Clombay Charter, of personnel policies. And it was personnel policies where we put all of the, all of the investigative steps that we take. There was the issue. It wasn't that people shouldn't treat their people right and do the right things. It was that's where we have all our investigative steps. And therefore, we could not use our own investigative tools, was the determination that Riskpool made for us, because all of our investigative steps and processes were in personnel policy. So that's why we had to end up going outside and we ended up turning it over to the state attorney general and they sent us the big, big bill. And so I agree with you. If that was the, the problem that the charter review committee was trying to fix, how come there's no accountability on these things? There's tremendous accountability in all of our appointments and all our, and we have a really good, solid investigative process and discipline, progressive discipline. We have all of that. But because it's all in the personnel policy and according to our charter, electeds and their one, you know, first deputy, whoever, are specifically exempt from the entire personnel system, we couldn't go down that path.
Look at the, and the ball has to bounce on a couple of cushions before the, before it heads into the pocket here. Look at the ordinance that adopts policy by reference and therefore then requires every elected or appointed or employed to like to follow the ordinance or follow the policy because it has to affect the ordinance. There may be some clarification that we could do on that exact point that gets us out of this pickle that we were in before because we were, we were in a gray zone or in a kind of an unaddressed area of how do we address this particular situation. But that has to be squared also with the fact that essentially elected officials that are appointed, appointed contractors with the people. You know, that's, that's a, that's a whole different thing than a appointed department head that's under a contract or a represented employee or a non-represented employee or charter executive, whatever. A lot of different, different parts there as well. So, yeah, that would be very worth investing some time in thinking about how to fill in that uncolored lock as far as most age of the country. So that may be the right track. The other, the other piece of it is, you know, we are all elected independently of each other. And, you know, we, we commissioners are unique and then we can only do stuff as a body, as opposed to, you know, carrying out this particular function that's assigned to us individually by law. And that's a whole, that's a, that's a different beast than is an elected department head has a function responsible with merely executive power, executive branch power instead of legislative power and issue. So it's a, it's a rich mix of how do you square the circle? And I think that would be worth, worth some thinking next year.
I was going to suggest, when we talk about the next steps for work recommendations, I was going to suggest that we actually set up again, maybe one or more work sessions. But invite the members of the charter review committee who served and maybe who supported those recommendations to come sit with the board. Because I can't beat their mind if there been a sort of, when it is a recommendation broken down, maybe flesh it out and maybe in some of these discussions, some of the things you raised, you might find, you know, areas of agreement that the board can say, how about, you know, bring that back into the conversation. Those that want to participate.
And I was also thinking the other electeds.
And the electeds.
I don't know if this, Tom, if you can have this conversation, you know, like once a month when you get folks. I've been a little casual in working on it. And one of the things people bring to my attention is I didn't want that.
Yeah.
And why?
And that, that adds up to the, I think it's part of criminal statutes that prevents us from intruding on the office of another. So what, what exactly does that mean? Where's the, where do we, where do we draw? And so I think if we clarify our, through an ordinance, I think we can clarify that. I think that's the appropriate vehicle because we're all sworn to follow our ordinances. That's ultimately where, where to wind up, like ordinance that defines the relationship as well as we can.
So to reach charter man, that's ratified, I actually have no doubt that if the charter man and elected officials need to follow county policies and get eighty-nine percent.
Oh, you know, I mean, that's, that's another no-brainer, as they say.
Exactly. So that's a no-brainer. So I think, but again, we work with the charter review. So we could maybe flesh out that would meet their needs. But, because I'm with you, the one is a whole new level kind of office of your, you know, starting with your own. But they also want to redress, public redress. So we can talk about that. And where is, where is the proper place? If you have a complaint that's an elected official, is the administrator at the right place? Probably not. Is the prosecutor at the right place? Probably more appropriate of the sheriff and other elected official as opposed to appointed people, especially with him in a lot of being an investigation of elected officials. It's not, the optics there are not good at all.
Well, the charters contains right now specific language that says the administrator and his functioning as per the charter, your job description for the charter doesn't have ultimate relationship of people to their elected officials. So I think they're looking for a place to go. See if we can't bring the charter review back to them, that investigation and the elected officials.
Because I listened to some of the comments that Mark had provided. He was with that group. And there was conversation. And at one level, when you're dealing with a full blown need for an investigation, say there's an investment, there's a system already. And so that is. And so, and I was kind of hearing Mark say, be prepared to use that existing system. And if you choose not to, realize that you have to hire very dedicated professionals trained specifically in that investigation process. But I was thinking about something that's less that, like a crime report, something that has, where to say, the commissioner said six months ago, this would happen, you did it. Or is this a filibuster, stone wall? And I agree with you. I'm not sure exactly who, but I think the public should have the right to say, I'm going to call a person because I want to know.
Great.
Good. Anything else?
We have the eleven o'clock meeting.
Yep. With the honor. So no further business coming before the work commissioners will adjourn this week's meeting. It'll be tomorrow morning for our weekly meeting at ten a.m.